Okay, it is four o'clock. I'll go ahead and call the September 8th meeting to order if I can get a roll call, please.
Mayor Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hardy.
Here. At this time, all who are able, if you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This moves us into our awards and proclamations, I believe.
Item 3.1, the week of September 17 through the 23rd, 2014, is Constitution Week in the city of Salina. Cindy Oding with the Daughters of American Revolution will read the proclamation.
My chapter read, Karen Musler's going to read and all answer questions.
Great, thank you.
I don't know why, she reads very well. Okay. Whereas, September 17, 2014, marks the 227th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Aaron Householder, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim September 17 through 23, 2014, to be Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained.
Great, thank you. What events do you all have planned this year?
Let's see, I've, I've...
You might hop on the mic just so the at-home players can hear you. Great, thank you.
I've written, let's see, newspapers, and I've asked some cemeteries and churches to do a bell ringing. They, when the Constitution was first drafted, they announced it through the towns through bell ringings, and then everyone came and they read it. And, let's see, we'll have a meeting, and then I have some crosswords and some pledge of allegiance, little things that I'm going to hand out at the Senior Center in Presbyterian Manor, and I have two displays, one at the library and one at Central Mall, and we'll see what else I come up with.
Along the way, where is it at, at the Central Mall? You say it's in?
It's in, let's see, Justice is a store, and, or maybe you're more familiar with Claire's.
Uh-huh.
It's across from there at a storefront.
In the storefront there, great. Okay, well, I've got your signed proclamation here, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
That moves us on to the, actually, moves us on to Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for anyone who has anything they'd like to bring before the Commission today that is not on the agenda. You'll have that opportunity now to come forward and speak.
Hi there. Lou Tryon, 2122, Leland Way. I'm a member of the Salina Cares group, as you all know, and we were started because we wanted to stop fluoridation in Salina. Well, we're here, or I'm here, I should say, to invite all of you, and the public as well, to attend our free informational programs that we're going to have on fluoride and its health issues. Salina Cares will be sponsoring these at the Salina Public Library in the Prescott Room during the months of September and October, and if you'll watch the calendar events, you'll see them there. The first one's going to be held tomorrow night at 7:00, and again, it'll be repeated again, at 1:30 on Thursday afternoon. We're trying to get a different crowd and give opportunities by having a variety of times there. The title of our first program, which is about 20 minutes long, it's a 20-minute video, will be called Fluoride, the Invisible Killer. It will feature Floyd Maxley, a chemical engineer, and his observations of fluoride. He is also the author of the International Anti-Fluoridation Database, so I'm sure he has a lot of information on fluoride that's very important. Our second program is called Things You Need to Know About Fluoride, and this will be another 20-minute-long program, and like I said, watch your calendar events and you can find it. We're doing this to educate everyone, and if you have an open mind, you can learn some new things, and we can all stand to learn new things. Some people in Salina are still confused about the different fluorides. We have our groundwater, the naturally occurring calcium fluoride, the pharmaceutical-grade fluoride, which the dentists use, and then our sodium fluorosilicate, the toxic contaminant byproduct from the fertilizer industry, which of course we know now comes from China, and China does analyze that, we do not. This sodium fluoride is not the same fluoride as in the toothpaste either. In fact, there's 10,000 milligrams of fluoride in a tube of toothpaste, and we only have .6 that we're dropping into our water. And as a little interesting side note here, Israel stopped all fluoridation in their whole country last month. In research published in the scientific journal Neurotoxicology, researchers found that the mixture of the two chemicals, disinfectant, whether it's called chlorine or chloramine, with fluorosilicate acid, which is what we put in our water, has a drastically increased potency, leaching amazingly high quantities of lead out of the pipes. And where does this lead go? Into our drinking water and right on into our bodies, or they wreak havoc by poisoning our heart, our kidneys, and our blood. Thanks for listening.
Great, thank you. So, seven, that's seven o'clock tomorrow at the Prescott Room, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to bring before the Commission? Nope? Okay, great, we'll move on. Thank you for coming. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of August 25, 2014. 6.2, authorize the mayor to sign the Supplemental Engineering Service Agreement with Wilson and Company Engineers and Architects for Ohio Street Improvement, City Project Number 14-3039, in the amount of $166,981.
Is there anything on the consent agenda a Commissioner would like removed or amended? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda, as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That carries 5-0. That moves us on to administration.
Item 7.1, Resolution Number 14-7134, approving the Kansas Department of Transportation Title VI Plan, which covers civil rights compliance.
Ms. McDonald, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Kansas Department of Transportation did a review this year and identified that we didn't have a Title VI plan in place. Title VI of the Civil Rights Act just ensures compliance with civil rights throughout the workings of any of the, or any of the things that we do with transportation. The components of the plan, which is the standard plan that they sent to us, we really can't make a lot of changes to the plan that you saw, but the standard plan includes everything that we currently have in place based on ADA and EEOC, other things that we've done. So, it isn't anything new with the exception of naming a Title VI Coordinator, and that is me, that would be me. Other than that, there aren't a lot of changes. As I said, the language that we use in our contracts is very similar and is okay with KDOT, that we use that language as opposed to the language that's in assurances, but it's the same language, so we're really there already. But KDOT does require this, so we'd ask that you consider Resolution 14-7134 to approve so that we can continue to get funding for KDOT. The second option would be to ask for more information or clarification, and we can bring that back to you, and the third option is to reject the plan and lose all our KDOT funding.
Who's making that motion?
I don't think so.
Any questions for staff on this? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this issue? It's a big hotbed. Okay, bring it back to the Commission for any possible action. I hope some action.
I move we approve Resolution Number 14-7134, approving the Kansas Department of Transportation KDOT Title VI Plan, which covers civil rights compliance.
Motion is second to adopt Resolution Number 14-7134. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0, and we keep getting money from the state.
Item 7.2, first reading ordinance Number 14-10752, amending and clarifying Salina Code Section 42 to 70 pertaining to zoning regulations for the siting and placement of wireless telecommunications facilities, including poles, antennas, and equipment in the public right-of-way in the city of Salina.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. On July 28th, you approved a new ordinance which established regulations governing the placement of wireless communication facilities on existing and new poles located in the public right-of-way, and since that adoption, we've had some coordination meetings. Mr. Stack and I have met with representatives of the prospective installer, and we've also met with Aaron Martin of Clark Mize Linville, kind of going over the ordinance and making sure we had all of our implementation steps in order, and in doing that, we noticed two things that we thought would be needing to be clarified to better carry out the original intent of the ordinance. In one case, the term "new poles" was left out of subsection H2, and we think that needs to be inserted to say that the same aesthetic requirements apply, no matter if you're putting in a new pole, a replacement pole, or that you are co-locating on an existing pole, that we will take the aesthetics of the pole and what its surroundings are into account in all those. And in the other case, there was a section that allowed for conditions to be placed on a permit, and the only case where that would come into play is a special permit that might go before the planning commission or might ultimately end up with you. In the case of a permit that meets all of our performance criteria and is going to be done through an administrative process, there's no discretion to attach conditions or anything, as long as it meets all of those requirements. So, the two revisions are spelled out there for you. We think that that cleans up and clarifies the ordinance moving forward, and I do have requests for approval for 41 locations on my desk right now, and so we view getting these changes done as quickly as possible as a matter of importance. So, our recommended action would be to approve the ordinance before you on first reading. Just declare by motion that a compelling public purpose exists to allow first and second reading today, and approving those changes on second reading also, and that will allow us to apply those provisions to the applications that we have pending.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Ms. Andrew.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this? Okay, I'll bring you back to the Commission for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance Number 14-10752, amending and clarifying Section 42-70.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt ordinance Number 14-10752. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we declare by motion that a compelling public purpose exists to allow first and second reading on the same day.
Second.
Have a motion is second to declare by motion that a compelling public interest exists to allow first and second reading on the same day. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance Number 14-1057-752.
On second reading?
On second reading.
Second.
Have a motion is second to approve ordinance Number 14-10752. Is there anyone from the public who's had a change of heart and wants to speak on this issue? Just checking, you never know. Any further discussion? Okay, we get a roll call on that?
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford.
Aye.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Mayor Householder.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. That moves us on to development business.
Item 8.1, Resolution Number 14-7135, granting a time extension for property tax exemption application submitted by Salina Vortex Corporation for a facility expansion on Waterwell Road.
Mr. Andrew, again.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Back in 2013, March of 2013, you adopted a resolution which stated your intent to favorably consider a property tax exemption for a expansion project out at Salina Vortex, which is located out at Waterwell Road and Centennial Road, and the specific plan was for 64,000 square foot addition, the initial creation of seven new jobs directly related to that expansion. And that was done in March, and as pursuant to our policy, we allow an 18-month project period to allow those projects to get complete. What is done during that process is, once the project is complete and a certificate of occupancy is issued, then they document their actual expenses that they incurred relating to the new construction and document the jobs that were created during the project period, and then their actual tax exemption is done through an ordinance that implements the exemption. The resolution that you adopted would have had a project completion date of September 15th, which is next Monday, which meant they would have had a certificate of occupancy by that date. They have indicated that they're not going to be able to meet that schedule, and you have in your packet a letter requesting that that construction period be extended to November 15th, 2014. There's no changes to the project in terms of its scope, there's no changes to the plans for job creation, they're simply behind schedule in terms of getting it complete. So, the only change would be to amend the resolution by changing the date to November 15th from September 15th. And then, once that project is done, we would come back to you with a project completion report, reporting their actual expenditures and their actual job creation, and then that would establish what level of exemption they would get. So, we are still at the resolution of intent stage, and so their request would be to, by motion, approve the resolution that would amend or extend that time period. With that, I'd be open to any questions.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Andrew. How would this motion need to be?
I've got a couple of questions, maybe not necessarily for Dean, but probably more for Jason or Mike on this. Reading through this and with the presentation there, do we know how much over, and I realize that, once it's completed, everything, we're going to get some information, do we know a range of what this abatement is worth, dollar-wise, what the abatement would be worth, and just trying to figure how that can, how that kind of figures into seven, seven jobs?
Commissioners, without going back and looking at the original paperwork, I would be guessing at best, so I really need to go back and check to see the original paperwork to be able to give you that number.
Okay.
I wouldn't want to tell you a wrong number.
And then, the second one is that, on those seven jobs that are being created by this expansion, are they, is there a minimum salary or minimum wage that is attached to those seven jobs, or can they be $8 an hour jobs?
There is, the short answer is there's not a minimum at this time under the current, very old policy. If you recall, we did talk about policy changes, we kind of wanted to see with the Economic Development Organization discussions where they go before we kind of bring back incentive policies, but the current policy's got quite a few years under it. It's based on a combination of capital investment and number of jobs. It does not stipulate a minimum wage for those jobs, but they have to be new jobs, and, I mean, that's kind of the primary aspect of that, and I think, it looks like Dean may have some additional information.
Well, in the original cost-benefit analysis, it projected that over the 10-year life of the abatement, little over $500,000 in property tax revenue would be abated, but that includes all taxing entities, so that includes, in this case, Unified School District 306, the county, the city, the Airport Authority, the library. If you combine all those exemptions over the full 10-year life, it was projected that it would be foregoing about $500,000 total in property tax over 10 years. But again, not city property tax, but total for all the entities.
Yeah, to try to simplify that without having each year's detailed information, obviously, that's about $56,000 a year. There's, I'm sure there's an assumption of values going up some in that time, so it's going to be 50 to, $50,000 to $60,000 per year on average. Our portion of the total property tax is pretty small, USD 305, as most schools do, occupy the largest percentage of that. I can't remember if ours is 20, 25%. Rod's not, oh, there he is. I don't know if he can answer that, but ours is probably closer to about 20%, 15 to 20% of the total levy, and so if you look at that roughly 50 to 60,000, 20%, around 10,000, 12,000, that's a pretty good guesstimate on city of Salina tax impact to that decision.
And are all of the taxing entities participating in that?
Yeah.
What, and this is obviously hypothetical, but what would, what would keep, since the date moved from October to, or from September to November, obviously, they're doing the expansion, they want to hire the workers to occupy the expanded space, is my assumption, but what would, what would make them, how do we know that they're tied to that exact exempt, to that exempted expansion versus saying, well, we'll just hold off hiring three people now and wait till after November and do that? Is there, do we have safeguards in place that it's, that we know that that is where it's, where the hiring's actually taking place?
The hiring as it relates to the actual expansion, so whatever they're going to do within the expansion, that the hiring is based on that particular part of the project?
Right.
That's a logistical question. Dean looks at that. I, I mean, we do check annually, we check the jobs, so we are, we do have a verification mode of that. I defer that to Dean on how.
If the question is whether the seven individuals hired have to work in the new space, the answer is no. They have, the test the state has is as a result of the expansion, which means that as it could be that they're working in a different part of the plant or facility, it doesn't mean that they're working in the 64,000 square foot new addition, but it has to be as a result of the physical expansion, and it has to occur during that timeframe.
And this isn't, I mean, this is more policy-related, it isn't so much related to Vortex, but how do we know that maybe the hiring seven people isn't due to an uptick in the economy versus the expansion?
I can't say that we duel together, although this process takes you to a particular timing, so if it's truly due to just an uptick in the economy, it's a bit coincidental. Although, I would say that, quite honestly, whether it's the economy, whether it's their other aspects of their business model that they have, the fact that they are, having, the fact that they have the ability to invest in their building today for whatever need that is, and then to hire, tells you that things are good, and it very much could be related to the economy or related to their business strategy.
The only thing we have control over is our local formula. We don't have control over the actual granting of the tax exemption, that's done by the Kansas Court of Tax Appeals, so you're not actually granting the exemption, they are, and they're looking at what our local formula is, and they're also looking to make sure that we have followed all the statutory procedures in terms of our local decision-making. But the actual exemption granting or not granting is done at the state level. And the other thing I would note is that we've had two cases, one with Great Plains Manufacturing, one with Grain Belt Supply, where the city, they, in the case of Grain Belt Supply, it was a huge expansion, but over that period, they had a net loss of employment, and even though they spent millions of dollars on an addition, they were not eligible for exemption because their project did not result in a net increase in employment at their plant. Because of a downturn, they had a loss of employment, and so they were, they were not eligible for the exemption. So, it does work both ways, and it is not, the state doesn't require that it be directly tied or physically attached to the addition, but only that it occurs as a result of that physical expansion. We do have a representative here for Salina Vortex, if you have questions of them.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, those weren't, those weren't in any way directed towards that in specific, but just in general, policy questions. And just one last, and I'll let others jump in, is that you had mentioned that, you know, and I recall the study session we had on the incentives and so on, and in doing some personal research on that, I did notice that other communities had annual reports that were actually compiled that showed such things as minimum wage requirements for even being eligible for any sort of abatement or subsidy or whatever, and then also kind of, it seemed like a lot more stringent reporting of them as well, so that, I think, just so that we know that taxpayer dollars and abatements are going toward really making a difference. So, that's just some of the concern I have, and also, I think, as we look at wanting to pivot into more of a light blue collar type workforce and so on, that we have some assurances that we're able to leverage some of the incentives with some of the objectives we want in our strategic plan of higher wages.
Yeah, Commissioner, your thoughts, comments, and questions are right in line with the homework we've done as we look at the draft approach, conceptual approach to a revised plan, looking at what we call quality and premier wage levels and what those mean, and that those are the jobs that are out there that would qualify for any form of a tax abatement of any kind, looking at the annual reporting. There is annual reporting today, but ensuring that they meet those requirements fully, what those new requirements might be, is also in there. Again, trying to utilize our processes and our incentives as a means to actually increase the wealth in our community as a whole and create more spendable dollars for our economy.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff?
One question. Do the school districts have any say in this decision?
They do, and really, the way this works is the, this is a fairly old policy, and the ability for us to do that, to set this up, we work and partner with the school district, with USD 305, and with the, there's a little section of community that's in the southeast of Salina District, I'm not sure what the number is for that. So, we work with the school district, all the property taxing entities, the school district, the county, you have the Airport Authority has an increment, I think the K-State University Extension and so forth, so libraries in there as well, they're all parties to this as a whole. So, when we look at these policies and enable those policies, starting with this one many years ago, and really talking about it, what will be a new one at some point in time when we finish refining it, the, we need to make sure that all of those taxing entities are on board with the new approach.
So, this body is acting on behalf of that entire group?
In the application of it, yes.
Mayor and Commissioners, it might also be of interest, in response to Commissioner Davis's question, the public hearing referred to, that occurred when this initial resolution was adopted, there are... was adopted, there are formal notice requirements to those other taxing entities as well, so they have that element of notice also.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for staff? Anyone from the public or the applicant want to speak at all? Not required to, but if you have anything.
I'm just here to answer a question.
Okay.
Is that pay parking?
We can make it that way.
Okay. So anyone else from the public on this? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back for possible action.
Mayor, I move we approve Resolution Number 14-7135, granting a time extension for property tax exemption application submitted by Salina Vortex Corporation for a facility expansion on Waterwell Road.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt Resolution Number 14-7135. Any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Moves us on to other businesses, is there any other business other than the other business?
Mr. Mayor, I think it is interesting to note that the commission is now dominated by left-handed commissioners.
Is that right?
I noticed that.
It's like a first.
Dr. Davis is left-handed.
All the time, look at that.
We're the only ones in our right minds.
Oh, and the attorney. The only one in your right mind, there you go, see, look at that. And funny too. Yeah, and funny too. Okay. So if there's no other business?
Five minutes ago, he said I was part of the aging generation.
Yeah, that's right. The 30-year-olds, the 30-year-olds.
Yeah, right.
That's right.
I move to recess into executive session for...
That's a good question. One hour.
Oh.
Order the pizza.
An executive session for one hour to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters and reconvene at, hmm...
6:30.
Commissioners, real quick, before you finish that motion, let me, may I consult with the legal counsel?
Sure. While he's consulting, let's just say that it's a good way to break the new commissionary in with a nice, long executive session. It's perfect for him. And just remember, if they say an hour, it means two.
Yeah. We're good at extending.
Yeah. Anything?
Intern until 7 o'clock's off.
There are also matters that require discussion that would fall under the trade secrets exemption and the real estate acquisition exemption.
So do I need to?
Rather than requiring you to go through all that language.
Simply add that part on there?
The reason for the redundant-sounding motions is that the Attorney General tells us we should both identify the category and the justification for the closed sessions. Given this combination, if I may, and if it would help you for your motion, it is simply that certain involve attorney-client privileged communications, there are matters involving trade secrets, and there are also matters related to preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real estate, all of which fall into that umbrella that public discussion at this time would jeopardize the city's position relative to each of those. So I think that would suffice, hopefully, if the Attorney General is listening.
Sure he should have.
Well, you talked me into a no vote.
Yeah, right. Sounds too long.
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
Well, it was hopefully that that would cover the waterfront for you.
The clerk just gave me a different one to read here. Okay, I move we recess into executive session for 60 minutes to discuss confidential data relating to the financial affairs and trade secrets of a corporation for the reason that public discussion of the information would competitively disadvantage the corporation and to discuss matters pertaining to the acquisition of real estate for the reason that public discussion of the matter would adversely affect the city's position in relation to the acquisition of the real estate and reconvene at, um...
5:40.
5:40.
Second.
Motion is second to move into executive session for one hour and reconvene at 5:40. All in favor?
Aye.
Any business?
I'm sorry?
Any business?
Oh, yeah, do we anticipate any business?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. All opposed? We're in executive session.